Twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five meeting of the Hammond County Board of Commissioners. Let the record indicate that all three Commissioners are present. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance, if you would.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the executive session memorandum of July twenty sixth or eight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries. Minutes of approval of minutes for July fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries. Highway Misses.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just have a few items today. Go up under agreements and supplements. The first one listed is an end dot LPA agreement. This is for our two eighty first street project from nineteen to rural. Brad, you want to?
It's a typical of standard LPA agreement, just to denote the federal aid obligation to us of just shy of five million dollars for that project. And it's one that I would typically with your consent, go ahead and sign that to be a Dr. Thorne.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Next agreement is a engineering agreement with Core Dino LLC. This is for design for one hundred thirteenth street and Holy Road. We were recently awarded this project through the Indianapolis MPO. The agreement's at the amount of four hundred and eighty one thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Basically includes everything with the exception of right of way appraising.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Wish them luck.
That's gonna be a tough project. That's gonna be a really tough project.
Next agreement, last agreement, is another engineering agreement. This is with United Consulting. This is our multi-bridge preservation agreement. We talked to you about this a couple highway meetings ago. Matt Lee is here if you want to have any specifics, but basically what Matt's trying to do is do a little more preservation work so we don't get to the point that we're always replacing bridges, trying to get some life out of bridges. So this agreement is in the amount of seventy six thousand, four hundred dollars. We're gonna basically look at a pool of bridges and try to estimate about a one point five billion dollars worth of construction work. It'll probably amount to somewhere between five and eight individual bridges. Something new we're trying, we're gonna do it this year. This may be, we would, if this works well, we'd like to do this on a annual basis.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
And that's all I have. Brad, do you have anything else?
No, we have a tentatively scheduled meeting on this one, but I don't have anything that I need to bring you in for unless you want to have the meeting for some other reason.
Don't break our.
Yeah.
I have something for you, Brad, and Mark and I do. This pathway over here.
Dunbar Road.
Dunbar Road. Where, what has been decided on it? We keep getting, thank you. We keep getting inquiries about that. And the lady that keeps inquiring, me inquired several times this morning.
Was it the same person?
Huh?
Who's this person? Is it one person?
Yeah, it is. It is, but I informed her after the discussion that we had that the multi-use path was going on the east side as we had discussed.
And she's on the east side, but she says it's gonna take down a bunch of big trees for her and she is adamantly against it. Do we have an alternative of going across the road there or going around the back of her property or?
It's so early in the development as I see it that there's a lot of options that are gonna be available and I think that we just need to go through the, our process and look at everything and, I mean, that's a property that we've obviously seen that we don't like to affect any trees or disrupt, you know, their family life, but I'm sure we'll look at that and there'll be some options that we'll look, we'll proceed and look, look at as we develop it, but it's so early, you know.
My question still goes back to Brad. I want to know what he said.
The utility line goes down through there as well, which may take a little different course than the same alignment that the path would. And so it would be us to look at where the path is actually gonna hit and see what the impacts might be and then see what we can do to mitigate them, but it's really early.
Is there gonna be a public hearing that this lady can speak to?
There always is.
With this project, there will be a public hearing because there's federal aid involved. At some point, there will be a public hearing, but we don't know when because we're just starting into it.
Okay.
I mean, there's also little possibilities of shifting a little bit of the alignment to maybe avoid the tree. I don't know. It's, again, it's so early in the game to know what that might cost to do that and if you want to do that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Anything else from Highway?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Hammond County Health Department, Jason Masters.
Good afternoon. Just bring for you today a request for approval for authorization for a meal expense on August twenty first. The Health Department will be the host department for the Fire Chiefs meeting during their monthly lunch meetings that they have.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Reporter Administration, Joe Eck.
Good afternoon. The first thing we have on the agenda is request for approval of a meal authorization. This is for the J-Rac Committee, Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council, for the meeting on August eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
The second is a popper attorney contract for Superior Court One. Judge Casati had one of the attorneys leave. She took a full-time job in another county and so he is replacing that public defender with Riley Parr.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you.
Would you send out, did you send out calendar invites for all the meetings?
I didn't. The only meeting we have set right now that I know of is the August eighth meeting and I sent it out as an email, but I can send you a calendar invite.
That'd be great.
Yes, I'll do that.
Because I was kind of confused as to how many meetings.
Well, I don't think it's been a hundred percent nailed down yet. I think that the goal is maybe monthly, but we haven't set any dates going forward as far as solid information, so.
It just seemed like we had lots of meetings planned.
Yeah, I think it's kind of gone, I definitely see that.
Necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you. Hammond County Emergency Management, Ryan Tennyson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before you today is a contract with Jeff Liefel. Jeff's a certified emergency manager and master exercise practitioner and the contract is for him to assist us with a full-scale exercise for our domestic terrorism preparedness initiative project to make sure we're better prepared for a active assailant incident response in Hamilton County. What he will be doing is completing all our HCEP or our Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Documentation to capture our, our exercise and then also make sure we're meeting grant requirements. The contract's for a total cost of six thousand, four hundred dollars that will be paid for out of an awarded U.A.C. grant that the board previously approved. And so here today seeking approval and signature on the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, that contract's for sixty four hundred?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
E nine one one, Public Safety Communication, Brian Pethel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Have a few things for you today. First one is the Verizon State of Indiana Purchase Order Agreement. This is a yearly document that we, that Verizon asked us to sign. It's not a commitment for any particular purchase or dollar value. This is just so we can get pricing at their rates.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
And next one is for Priority Dispatch and this is the company that does our phone call monitoring and evaluation. This is adding on to a contract that we signed last year and this is gonna add in some extra quality assurance pieces to that software.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Next one is a, a new partnership that we're forming with T-Mobile right now to add on to, on top of our Verizon and AT&amp;T phones and they have an interesting ability to give us zero-cost phones. So while we're starting to add new phones, this gives us the ability to evaluate some of our zero-cost usage or zero-usage phones and some of our low-usage phones and transfer them to a zero-dollar rate through T-Mobile. So this is a, a new thing. AT&amp;T and Verizon do not offer this, but this is, this is something that's become available to us now that we're moving over. Now, we can't move all of our phones to it, that'd be great, but some of our, like, we've identified some zero-usage phones that are just flat out not being used, but we still have to have the number and they can cost anywhere from forty to fifty dollars a month for basically no usage.
So is a number placement holder more than anything?
Yes.
Got it. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Okay, the next one is for collective data. This is inventory software, so that we're looking to implement this software to take over tracking, purchasing, lifecycle management for all of our assets whether capital or otherwise. This also has the ability to add our fleet maintenance records into it, gives us the ability so that the lit agencies can also make requests for items when they have new hires so that we can get them, all their necessary items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
And the last one I have for you is for the Guardian RFID Tyler interface. So this is a one-time cost for what was approved for the Sheriff's Department, I think at the last BOC meeting. This is just a Tyler interface to get the data fed over to them.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, Risk and Compliance Division, Rebecca Scott.
Hello.
Hello.
Today I have the annual auto physical damage audit invoice. First time I've been able to say that without screwing that up. Each year, our county broker provides the insurance company with a list of county vehicles for the upcoming renewal and this satisfies the annual audit of the expiring policy period. Then Walker Professional sends the invoice for the difference in the premium and that invoice is in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Today, I request authorization of payment from the liability trust.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Duncan's on his way right now.
Okay, we'll give us a second here to catch up.
Chris is in the audience.
Yep.
We'll skip down to.
Chris Mertens.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hello.
Got two items this morning. The first one is a request, termination notice for our contract with Wolfport. I think this has been discussed with legal. The state is, was previously offering for orthophotography a six-inch resolution. They increased that to three inch and so that is normally what we get and so we're gonna utilize the state contract, so there's no need for the Wolfport contract.
But what I got was a contract in our packet? That's where I was confused. It's just, is that?
There's a letter, I believe, behind it or in part of it.
It's just terminated.
Oh, okay, so the letter was on the tail end.
No.
Okay.
So the contract, or the, the notice would be sent to Wolfport if you guys are agreeable.
But we can do it without penalty?
Yes, we specifically provided in the contract before we signed it because we anticipated that this might happen, so we specifically included a section in that contract for this reason, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Uh, the next item is a, an item we just need a signature on. Workday is moving from their own data centers to public cloud data centers, so they're utilizing AWS and Google data centers. They're slowly migrating their customers from one, from their current data centers to one of those public data centers. It's a project that we have to schedule. It's not a cost to us, it's just an acknowledgement that we are going to engage in that, that migration.
Okay, and we're agreeable to that?
Yes, right now Heather has postponed that migration until twenty, sometime in twenty six.
Okay. I guess we don't have a choice but to approve this.
Yeah.
Yeah, at some point we'll have to.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries. Gary, you're just almost in time. Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Which one do you want to do first?
Which one do you want to do first?
Well, we can do the easement first for the courtyard to Hazel Dell.
Okay.
Uh, that is an easement for EPCON to extend their storm sewer to our regulated drain. It's been approved by the drainage board and it is here today for Commissioners' approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you. The next is a, really looking for an endorsement from the Commissioners related to a funding request we're gonna make to the county council for an additional appropriation for two thousand twenty-five for a contract with Intera to continue the water availability study. The water availability study was a three-year project that was funded with ARPA money to establish a network of groundwater monitoring stations throughout the county and since that funding has exhausted the ARPA money, we no longer have the funds to continue collecting data. And so I'm gonna approach the county council for an additional appropriation for two thousand twenty-five to hire Intera to continue that contract. I've also requested money in the two thousand twenty-six budget for the same contract to continue collecting the data. So really this is an endorsement from the Commissioners for me to approach the council to fund that contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community Development Block Grant?
Oh, we can't do that. It's a public hearing and we're not at time. You can explain it, but we can't have the public hearing till.
I see, one fifty.
All right, well, I guess this will definitely give me an opportunity to do the full presentation. So I'm here today to do a public hearing and final presentation of the annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant program. And I do apologize on the agenda, it does reference a five-year consolidated plan, it's actually just the one, one-year annual action plan for two thousand twenty-five. So as we've discussed with stakeholders.
Okay, hang on for just a second. Our council over here is saying we can't do this. Well, if the public's gonna piss pay, the public gets an opportunity to hear it, so I would suggest.
We just wait until.
Excuse me, we'll come back to it, okay? After the. Okay, Commissioner, committee reports.
I have none.
I have none. Attorney.
Yes, I have a few things for you today. The first is Resolution zero seven two eight two zero two five dash one. This is for the, a resolution that starts the process for bonding for the acquisition of property and a partnership with Riverview Health. The, as, as I've told you before, we rearrange how the process works, it starts with the Board of Commissioners, so this is just that process to start, that started out. Is there any questions, comments or concerns? The dollar amount is not to exceed twenty-three million dollars at this point in time.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
The next item is, at the, your previous meeting, you adopted a resolution that agreed to transfer property from Riverview, to the Riverview Hospital Association. We didn't have the quitclaim deed, so the resolution's been approved, but I have the quitclaim deed for you here right now and this would need to be approved since it wasn't in place at the time of the last meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
I didn't change that, they actually have Rob's name on there too, and Rob's actually up there, but, um, the next item is, at the last meeting, you also appointed three possibly temporary appointments to the, uh, the Riverview Health County Hospital Association, thus being Dave Bertner, Dave Richter and Phil Beer. I just need your signature for these three and the auditors attest to it. And then there is one for approval today. You need an additional member to be public or present tomorrow at their meeting and that is, and you have chosen to have appoint David Boyer as a temporary member to the Riverview Health County Hospital Association. So I need approval for David Boyer and then just your signatures for the other three since they were approved at your last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
I apologize, there's a few different ones there, it's for all four of the members. That is, that's all I have.
Okay. Director of Administration, Mike Cothers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A few items on my agenda today. The first one I'm just presenting for your review, no vote necessary, is the June two thousand twenty-five monthly weights and measures report.
So moved. Or we don't have to do.
No vote necessary. The other, second item is no vote necessary, just for your reviews, the second quarter report from the two thousand twenty-five Invest Hamilton County. The third item I'm presenting for your, your review, no vote necessary, is a letter and accompanying documentation from United Consulting on behalf of the city of Nebelsville with their intent to proceed with the construction of a new pedestrian bridge on one hundred forty-sixth street just west of State Road thirty-seven. I did consult with Highway and we have no objections on our end, so that's just for your attention. The fourth item is introducing for your review, approval and signature is the Hamilton County nine-one-one project disbursement, a number nine for three million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you. The next item introducing for your review, approval and signature is SRF Disbursement Fund Number Thirty-four for one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you. The next item up for your review, approval and signature, SRF Disbursement Number Thirty-five for eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you. The next item up introducing for your review, approval and signature, an event application for Plum Pictures LTD requesting permission to film an interview in the old courthouse on Sunday, August tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
What was the purpose or who they?
It's, Diana and I have spoke with these folks, they're out of London. They're doing a documentary, documentary about the judicial system and they want the setting of the courtroom. In their application, we have indicated to them that they, they can't move anything in the courtroom, security will be on staff as far as a sheriff's deputy and, and they have to abide by the rules that we make everybody else abide by.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you. The next item up is introducing for your review, approval and signature is a quote for services from Buckland Associates, our contracted appraiser to appraise the shared in airport property, the recent building additions to the four-H fairgrounds and a property located at seventeen twenty-one Pleasant Street, Nebelsville for a total of twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Thank you. I have one less item, just came in to Diana today, it's time sensitive, it's regarding this weekend's street dance. The committee has requested permission to use the, the square, their event application is attached, requesting for your approval and signature to move that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
And that wraps it up for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Sheriff. You have to stand in the back of the room.
Well, that's what we all say. I'm Scott Goff, I'm not the sheriff, but I'm a substitute today. And I don't have any requests, I just appreciate you all and just wanted to say thanks. You have any questions?
Anybody have anything for the sheriffs for me?
Nope.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Auditor.
He gets it right when she's sitting in the auditor.
Well, of course.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
No pressure.
Yeah, don't mess up.
Oh, she knows me. I'm gonna ask for approval of the two thousand twenty-six one forty fours that were in your packets. I don't need signatures, just need you all to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
For your approval and signatures, I have the Treasurer's Monthly Report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Acceptance of bonds and letters of credit.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
Health Trust Monthly Expenditure Report.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
F settle claims?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries.
And vendor claims, and as you requested, Commissioner Altman, the liability trust report in the papers.
Yeah, way back to like the eighteen hundreds, I think.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote on vendor claims?
Huh?
Vote on vendor claims. You did not do a vote on vendor claims.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
I am motion carries. What do we gotta do now? We have fifteen minutes.
I think we can take a bit of a break. I'll move to recess.
I think, I think we should ask Robin Mills what is this, you know, honor.
That's for how she's, how retirement's.
Yeah. She wanted to check on, on.
Only nice thing.
Yes, only nice thing.
I did have something about your purse to show you.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Hope everyone's doing well.
Yeah, and you too.
And this is, this is my life in retirement.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, look at her. Look at her.
Oh, my goodness. Look at her. Look at her.
So we're hoping to have her surgery next year, straighten her finger out, but they're doing great. So it's good to see everybody. So I got an appointment, so I thought I'd just come in and say hi.
Did he pass? Did he pass?
Well, what she didn't mention about her life in retirement, she gets to go do that in between my phone calls and the police workup, so.
But it's good to see everybody.
See you here.
Let's see you.
Yes.
Let's take a, what?
If you want to go ahead and address this, I'll stay here till 1:50 and then make a record if there's nobody here for the public hearing. Any others go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, we have.
I can't be at two places at one time. I'm not that great.
Well, come on.
Really?
When I come and get them, I'll come and get you.
Well, is this administrative afterward that you don't have to have a record? A work session, or?
Typically, it's recorded.
It is?
Yeah.
Do you have any work sessions, stuff, administrative?
The first one could probably be, I mean, possibly, yeah. I think the first one might be a little too, depending on what exactly it is. Both of them could be, because it could just be an update on existing matters, I think.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Stuff that's not commercial, other than what's going on.
Take a recess.
Well, you tell us what we're supposed to do.
I, I, I think you have to.
I think we take a recess until 1:50 and then recomb.
We'll recess till 1:50.
And if there's nobody here, you can come back in and close the meeting.
Yep.
Chair, listen to you real quick.
Sorry, keep going. Yeah, there should be sitting.
You remember what you were all part of, you said, Michael?
Hopefully, there was supposed to be, so we can prove it, but. Yeah, so I was supposed to, yeah. And I haven't heard anything contrary to that. There, you guys are ready to go, our counsel.
I imagine several gallons at a time.
Let's go back. This will be a public hearing. Should I open that first?
Change needs your presentation.
Okay. Alrighty. Let's see. Slide show. There it goes. There it goes. All right. Again, I am here today to do a presentation, our final presentation of the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for the year 2025. That program year does start October 1, 2025, and runs through September 30, 2026. As we've discussed and discussed with stakeholders in the county, our funding priorities for the annual action plan for '25, very similar to what we have been doing the last few years, focused primarily on the creation of affordable housing, supporting local nonprofit housing developers in their pursuit to develop more affordable housing. The Community Land Trust, which we've discussed, getting that established, we're in the process of that now, so we will continue to support that effort to get the Community Land Trust up and running. We are looking into, or working on, basically the design of a owner-occupied home repair program again. We know, we've gotten questions, comments from the public wanting to know if Hamilton County even has a home repair program, so we do see a need there. Our focus will be initially on, like, emergency repairs and some minor modification, accessibility modifications, so that seniors can age in place. Also, looking to strengthen partnerships with private developers, and coming up with creative ways of offering more truly affordable units for low to moderate income families. As always, there are funds that go to our, for municipalities, for cities that are currently participating, to improve neighborhood infrastructure and support neighborhoods that are predominantly low to moderate income. And then, of course, fair housing and administrative funds. Funds available for program year 2025, the total allocation from HUD is $1,146,153. Of that, $541,922 will be set aside for affordable housing initiatives, purchasing parcels for affordable housing development. $75,000 set aside for minor home repair program, $300,000 set aside for municipal infrastructure, and then the $229,231 to cover planning, administration, capacity building, and fair housing. Just looking back, just wanted to share with you kind of where things stand with previous year's funds. So as you see, we've got money for, from '24 for infrastructure still, just under $500,000 for housing, the $100,000 that was set aside for the capacity building of the CLT. And then, from program year '23, we still have 40, just a little over $45,000 remaining, as well as the CV funds, $416,628 total. Next steps, we're doing, you know, the public hearing today. Our 30-day public comment period will be ending this week as well, on Wednesday. I will be coming back to you guys at your next meeting to do the, basically, the final presentation and get your approval of the final draft of the annual action plan, and that will be submitted to HUD following that meeting. It is technically due to HUD, October, not October, August 16. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions?
Yeah, would you receive applications for funding if they're significant? Would you be so kind as to send an electronic to all of, copy of that?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that might solve some problems that have arisen.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
There's no other questions from the board. We will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business? Do we have a work session, Mike?
Yep, we do.
Okay. We will take a recess. We will be back in the boardroom. If anyone would like to join us, that is an open meeting, and continue the meeting back there. Thank